See, I've voted to create that committee and to be headed up by Commissioner Dawson. I believe tonight is his and the committee's report or discussions just amongst the board in the group to figure out what that looks like and to go forward. So with that, this is kind of the purpose, that's the purpose for this court session. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Dawson and then the board as a whole to engage.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Mayor. So November is when we had our first meeting with the Park Operational Plan Committee. And man, it has been a whirlwind since. We have been meeting every two weeks and we have been meeting with the community. Many of the community stakeholders, the Friends of Bowie Nature Park, the veterans with the American Legion, the Historical Society, the Aquine Community, and just trying to gain insight as much as we possibly can for our park system, all three of our parks. And I can tell you that we have people on the committee that have lived here their entire life. And then some of us are that are brand new to the city and we had no idea what the park system had to offer. It's just simply amazing. And we certainly can build upon that. And we have identified three main opportunities for the park system. And we talked briefly about this last meeting. So the first is funding for the park system, a consistent and a way to fund the park on a consistent basis. The second is a comprehensive plan for the park system, all three of our parks. And then the third is to reinstitute that position in the park. I believe that was a naturalist, but we would like to look at possibly upgrading that position to a park manager position, to be the quarterback for all of the events and so forth that happened in Bowie Nature Park and at the Historical Village and at the Veterans Park. So if we could, I would like to first start to start off talking about funding for the park system. And just with the conversations that I've had with Mr. Collins and a few other people, we talked about creative ways that we can do that without causing an impact fee, which there are issues when it comes to impact fees, where that money is allocated, where the money is received from, and it's kind of complicated. So we discussed possibly funding the park through building permits. And Mr. Collins, can you explain a little bit further how we could potentially create that funding through building permits?
Yes, sir. So generically, and obviously there's some discussion we had, but the best way to do that is to allocate a percentage or a dollar, whatever that however we arrive in that figure, from building permits to the operations of the park. I know there's been some discussion, Christian Butler who mentioned before, about a park user fee or something similar to that. And I think those are generally derived in the same manner or similar. In years past, what the city did, which really didn't have a whole lot of life or longevity to it, was go back and attempt to include a percentage of a percentage of revenues. In other words, if you had, I think a few years ago, maybe in 2015, there was a property tax rate increase. I believe it was reduced in 2015, reinstated in 2016, based on the 2015 property valuations. And then they attempted to take percentages of that percentage increase and apply that to certain areas of use, and that's really difficult to do. So I think the easier way to do that, to get us away from the discussion of an impact fee, because obviously those carry a different weight and different measure and application. I think the easier way to do that is just simply go back by ordinance and establish that a certain number or a certain dollar that's collected through building permit will be applied to the park, park operations, that sort of thing. I think once you go back and figure out what that number is, obviously we'll look and see, put some math to it. But the simple way to do that is to decide, okay, we need, for ease of discussions, a thousand dollars a year to operate the parks, right? So in that case, you could simply go back and add, you could increase a builder permit, building permit by a hundred dollars. If you have 10 of those and they would fund that thing. So you can do that and just allocate those dollars that come in. You could enact an increase and then just allocate that dollar increase to the operation of the parks. It would be a simple, a simple way to enact. There are others, but that'd be the easiest.
So specific amount instead of a percentage of the...
Sure, absolutely. I would encourage a specific dollar amount. That will help you when you're, anytime you're trying to apply percentages as things grow. If you have a good year where building permits come in and there's a percentage of that, that's fine. If there's an off year, it comes down. And what you want to do, if at all possible, is not be too heavily reliant on a percentage of an unknown revenue source. So if you can go in and identify what those sources are and get it pretty closely, then you can have more of a well-defined dollar amount.
I was about to say percentage, okay.
Right, no, we'd want to avoid those if we can.
Could we somehow set it up where, you know, a single-family residence would pay a certain dollar figure, but a multimillion-dollar building permit would pay a certain, and I say percentage more, would pay higher?
Sure, you can tier it however you prefer. Absolutely, yes. Yes, you can put that in tiers so you could do residential, commercial. The same methodology we use for development of the building permits as we have them now, you could apply there and just apply a dollar value to those things. That'd be easy to do.
Okay. Yeah, that would be great. So what is the next step when we start talking about building permits? And I know that that is something that we're currently looking at, the cost of building permits throughout the city compared to other surrounding areas and what their building permits are. What is the next step for that?
We're not so far off on some of the building permit numbers that we have now. Obviously, we're in a little different arena in that we don't provide water, we don't provide sewer, we don't do those things. So there are all of those things that come into play. I think that the easy way to do this is kind of reverse engineering and figure out, okay, where, how much are we trying to invest in the park over a certain period of time? We can ballpark about how many building permits come in a year. I know recently, in the past few years, people think Fairview's growing as fast or faster than, you know, Spring Hill and Nullaville and all those places. And in fact, we're not. We're growing substantially slower in those areas. That said, I think we could take our knowns generally, apply those dollars, say it's $10 a building permit or $100, whatever it is, apply those dollars to that, to that plan, and then go from there. My suggestion would be to cede that money a little bit rather than going and say, okay, we anticipate in the first year, we're going to generate, I don't know, $25,000, whatever the number is. We may want to back that off a little bit or see if we can supplant that with some other sources of dollars to kind of kickstart some programs. And then, once we're kind of assured that we get that growth in, then you can apply those there. But we can certainly work through the math.
Okay. Yeah, that's great. Speaking of timeframes, how fast do you think we could get this done and potentially vote on this?
My preference would be if we're going to do it, then we would do it as a part of the coming budget year that starts July 1. So if we were looking, all we would really need to know to do that would be apply whatever the, now there's, let me back up, there's going to have to be some sort of budget set. What are we trying to accomplish with this funding, right? But as far as the structure of it, if we had budgets, information, discussions to be had as far as the actual dollars, is you guys are aware, we're having a work session for the budget on May 5. So if we had some idea of what that looked like on May 5, we can do the work and have it, have the legwork, the language of this installed no later than mid-July.
Great, great news. Anybody have any...
So right now, I think our building permits by square foot. So if we set an average, our average building permit was X, we're going to increase it 25% to capture and then have a set rate that's dedicated to the park fund or the park budget that comes out of each one, would kind of be how it would be set up?
We would just add a dollar. So let's say you go back and, let's say you're talking single-family residential. Generally speaking, then you may want to go back and say, a single-family residential building permit, we're going to add $100 to that permit, right? That $100 would go to park operations, right? If it's a duplex, it may be $200. If it's an apartment complex, it may be $10,000, whatever the amount is. And just simply apply the dollar amount so we know when someone comes in and pays that building permit, we know we're going to transfer $100. Someone comes in and buys a $1,000 building permit and $100 of it is, it goes to the parks, then we would take that $100 and once that money comes in, we would just transfer that to the, to the park fund or the park checking account and pay whatever we're paying out of that fund. So really, really easy on our side.
Maybe we, you know, to meet this year's budget, we analyze some maintenance items or some quick projects that we see near future. And then as we get that comprehensive plan, park plan together, and we maybe target some bigger items, we can reassess or revisit. Then we'll have some more harder numbers. So from, when we get the comp plan, we have some actual projects that we really want to try and take on, we'll probably have a better idea about future budget items or how we're going to fund them.
Sure. The, excuse me, the, we have a maintenance list and things that we work through. Keith and Brian do a pretty good job of kind of keeping up with that, and they'll let us know year in what those things need to be, and we'll apply those things for the coming year budget. And we have a couple of sources of revenue for that. I think as it applies to the operational plan, it really depends on what the board wants to see out of that and the timeline for that. And one of the things that were discussed were, was a kind of a comprehensive plan for the park system. How do you fund, how do you fund that thing? And there's money available for that. I think in anticipation of that, if we had a couple of projects that we knew we were going to look at, and I'll give you two examples, I'm not suggesting that we do or don't do them, but two examples that we're working on in-house to figure out what to do with these. Example number one is improved parking at the Triangle School, right? There's been discussion for a couple of years, how do we use this? How do we use this? Can we just throw some gravel out there? Can we just do some things? Well, kind of no, simply because the city's going to need to comply with its own regulations as it relates to parking and parking use of structures. So one of the things that Kevin is working on right now is to get us an estimate to pave a parking lot with 12 parking spaces and the required number of handicap parking spaces so that you would have those number of parking spaces available to use at the Triangle School, right? You can only fit so many people in there, so what would the parking be? So that's one thing Kevin's working on, to make that area more useful. The second thing that they're working on is an improvement to Veterans Lake in the form of improving the spillway. The issue at Veterans Lake is the walking trail, if we want to call that, around there is really not usable because the spillway has really degraded over the last several years, and we need to do some work on that. The dam itself is structurally sound, as we know. We do those inspections periodically, and we have no issue with the construction of the dam itself. But to make improvements and to raise the level of the lake, we're going to need to raise the level of the spillway and then include in that a footbridge or some other access. So we could park in the parking lot and have a true walking trail all around that, and part of that walking trail would go over the spillway, obviously constructed, a concrete, handrails on each side, that sort of thing. So that's the second thing that he's looking at. So those are the kind of things that we're looking at on an investment to kind of kickstart some of this. Now, once we get into those numbers, it would be up to everybody, all of us, as we get into the budget, to figure out which one of those can be paid for soon with available dollars. And then after that, which ones would be operations that you fund through the revenue applied to the building permit. I think the goal is to have, and I'm not speaking for the group, but I think the goal with this is to have some sort of operational activity or activities at these locations. And I think this part of that goal is to be able to take these increased revenues and fund those activities. So my hope would be that we could find a way to fund capital through other resources and use operational dollars for operational activities. If I'm hearing everything correct, I think that's kind of where we're leaning to.
Mr. Dawson, Mr. Collins, how do you think it will fit in Triangle School?
We would have to go back and do, there's seating out there, but because we haven't attempted to do that, the fire department, you know, the house got to meet fire code, and that would be what really defines the occupancy. And once we could define it, then we would be able to figure out what that is. I apologize, I can't answer that right now, I don't know.
The reason I ask is I'm thinking cloud parking places, is that, I mean, is there space to put more? I mean, with 12...
I think part of the issue you're going to, and we picked a 12 as an arbitrary number, given the measurements that we had on site. Part of the difficulty that you're going to run into with that is, right now, we can include that number of spaces or thereabout without having to install curb and gutter, stormwater and drainage, right? So the thinking is, how do we make it usable without trying to overblow this thing and all of a sudden, we're installing a drainage system to add five parking spaces? Because obviously, that brings on a whole other realm.
I think about that requirement, so we have to...
So we were looking at purely from a standpoint of, how do you use it? And the thought would be, in practical terms, it could be a meeting space, it could be, you know, it could be a small, a small group study, some other thing like that. A community, if you have a neighborhood association, that's kind of a meeting, that sort of thing. But it wouldn't be designed so you could have 150 people out there at some event to do something. I don't think we would want to put that much stress and use on the building and the structure itself. I think preserving that would be, how do we get the highest and best use and also make sure that all the work that was done in the past is preserved and not at risk? And that's how we arrived at a general number.
I have one thing about that.
Turn your microphone on.
So when we had the grand opening celebration for the Triangle School and the other buildings, the Historical Association put together this, you know, I guess, a celebration for the grand opening. And we were told at that time, it was around 125, and that's how much we had, that's the many people we had in the Triangle School. The initial plan that we put together had the parking up near Highway 100 with trail or paths that went from the parking to the school and the other two buildings. So that was kind of the, you know, I know there's parking in the back, but the long-term plan was to have the parking up front by the highway. And the Parks and Landscape Group met at the Triangle School on Monday, and it worked out really well. That's something that we would, you know, like to do every month, and possibly, if it, you know, were to be okay, have, since we're there for that amount of time, have it where it could be open for, you know, people to come. And maybe we do a little tour before the meeting, and then people could stay for the meeting if they'd like. So that was just what was discussed at the Parks and Landscape meeting on Monday.
Sure. So when we went back, and again, not having all that information, but looking at kind of how can we accomplish something for us, we do know that, we looked at some footprints around the site, and the closer we get to Highway 100 with parking, the closer we, there are two risks that we saw with that. The first would be, the closer we get to Highway 100, the closer we are to state right-of-way. And the closer we are to state right-of-way, the closer we are to state route drainage requirements. So we were trying to mitigate that as best we could within that thing. Now, I said it's right or wrong, that's just our thinking as we got there. And the second was, the further away we were from the school, the longer that we would have to consider how we install handicap-accessible walking paths to there. And part of the issue that we ran into on the backside, if you're facing the school, the school's in front of you, there's a gravel parking area to the right, you're looking across the field to Highway 100, is you go to the back, when that site was improved, so to speak, to install those buildings, there were some undulations that were placed in that, in that area. So if you walk outside, out the back door of the school, so to speak, you go up and down some significant little swells as you get across the field. And what we're trying to do is make sure we could avoid trying to include sidewalk or other thing there because of percentage grades on ADA accessibility. So how we arrived at just our basic, what improvements we make was, if you're facing the school, obviously, there's the door to the left that has steps you can go in. In front of you, there's a, there's a door that goes into the hallway before you get into the classroom. Then to the right of that is the accessible ramp that goes to get you up to the back door of the school. So what our, what we thought was, and how we arrived, and again, it doesn't matter to us, this is a y'all decision, not a me decision, but how we arrived at the, that discussion was, the thought was that we would have the parking, if you're facing it, to the right, adjacent to the building, but to the right of the building, between the building and the house to the right. Have that parking go there that would give you ADA accessibility to the ramp that exists at the school in the back, and then extend the sidewalk from there adjacent to the ramp that would take you to the two other outbuildings. So you would be able to get to those without having to have too much, the construction of too much ADA-accessible sidewalk. So we were thinking of, how could you park there, make a way around to the front, exit your car, either access the ramp on the side of the building or traverse a sidewalk to get to the other two? And that's how we arrived at that. That's how, that's our limited discussions about that thing. But we knew we had to get off-center somewhere and find something, and that's how we arrived at that discussion.
Yes, Mayor Anderson, something else that we talked about in committee was specifically for that property, and that's such a beautiful piece of property, you know, that beautiful flat open area in front of the school, the buildings, and, you know, without that comprehensive plan, without knowing what the community wants to see there, does the community want to see that area grow? Do they want to see more historic buildings put up? What do they want to see specifically with that property? It's hard to know where we put the sidewalks, where we put the parking, you know. Currently, we have parking in the back area there, so if we were to, you know, install more parking in the back, that's understandable. But what is our plan for that overall piece of property? And I would hope that's what the comprehensive plan would help us with, understanding what is the growth of that property? What's the, what are we seeing happen in that Historic Village, the Veterans Park and Bowie Park? So we can have a plan of, okay, our next priority is parking to the side. Where exactly is that parking going to be? Where's the next building going to be in that connectivity with all of the parks? So...
Do you have more historic buildings?
We've got a bunch of historic buildings in Fairview and surrounding area.
To answer part of your question, when we began planning the Historic Village, we had a site plan put together that was approved a long time ago. Neil has a copy of that site plan. It does show additional buildings and amphitheater, paved paths that are ADA-compliant, parking. Right now, when anything goes on there, whether it's preparing taxes or doing our, you know, meetings there or for the Parks and Landscape or whatever, people are parking on the grass. So that's just what's happening, because there's not enough parking. So right now, people are parking on the grass. And there is a plan, and we will, you know, we can get that to you. I mean, not that it's something that probably needs to be revised because it was, you know, prepared a while back, but it had an amphitheater, it had the parking, it had more additional buildings for that site.
I think we have some wonderful plans already established. The master plan, for example, for Bowie Nature Park, you know, people spent a lot of time in that master plan, and it's a wonderful plan. I think we need to update it. That needs to be part of our comprehensive plan, and certainly we'll take that plan, that would be my suggestion anyway, and hopefully incorporate that into our park system master plan or comprehensive plan.
Are we, are we going to ever start calling the parks? Because I know we talked about this one time while I was in the Parks and Landscaping, referring to the whole, to all the parks as the Bowie Park System instead of Bowie and the parks?
Right. You know, that's certainly up for debate. I like the thought of the Fairview Park System instead of, and it's funny you say that, Mayor, because everybody, when you say park in the city of Fairview, they think of Bowie, Bowie Nature Park. And of course, it's the largest park, but we have really three other beautiful parks, you know, with the Williamson County Rec Center, you know, with the baseball fields as well. So it's kind of bringing all of that under the Fairview Park System. So, you know, whatever we name it, certainly up for debate and discussion.
And I know that internally, there's been talk about developing the Deer Ridge property. Maybe this is not the spot to bring this up, but developing the Deer Ridge property and kind of connecting the History Village and Deer Ridge and making it kind of all one thing. And maybe doing Deer Ridge and amphitheater because you can have more park in there and doing an amphitheater out there, maybe a basketball court, you know, something like that out there, connect it to History Village and make it more walkable.
And/or parking for History Village. You know, you're exactly right, and that is the opportunity. And when we start talking about connectivity, I would like to see connectivity throughout our entire park system. So being able to walk from the ballfields all the way up to the rec center and History Village, for example, you know, we...
The ballfields here, 96?
The, yeah, and 100, 96 and 100, yeah.
There.
Right. You know, we have a power line that runs pretty much that entire area, and wouldn't it be great if you could bike or walk that entire location from park to park to park? So hopefully, that's what that comprehensive plan can help us with, is what does that connectivity look like? What are we going to do with that other property if we do have opportunities?
I would love to see Deer Ridge developed so that, because there is more space, to put more park in there, and develop that into something the community would, I mean, I have visions of like Sunday afternoon plays and, you know, weekend kind of events like that out there.
Yeah. Yeah. There is so, so many opportunities. And I would love to hear, maybe through that, and I know we keep jumping into that comprehensive plan, but what does the community want to see? Where would they like to see that amphitheater? Where would they like the next structure or whatever? And hopefully, going through that exercise, we can, you know, glean a little bit more information from the community.
I'm sorry.
Anything, no, no, anything more about the funding?
I think we try and plan on putting it in the budget. I think there's like 140, 140-something permits last year. My initial numbers are maybe 500 or 1,000. See where that puts us from a project standpoint. Mr. Collins, as you're kind of reviewing that, see if that fits or if it needs to be less or more.
500?
Per permit.
500 per permit?
Yes, sir. So that would have been about 50 grand on last year's permits.
Yeah, so, I mean...
And then it could be tiered off residential or commercial like we were saying earlier, right?
Sure.
And you tell me if you think, you know, when you put some numbers together, if it needs to be higher, I think, but just trying to, from a starting point standpoint, trying to find out.
We'll get something together, we'll have it for you. I'll try to have something out before we get to that May meeting, just to kind of let everybody kind of digest that a little bit. I think a part of that will be kind of what we talk about tonight as far as what those expectations are for what we think we may want to fumble that, but absolutely, I can get that to you.
So we can show where we're planning on spending and...
Right, yeah. Great, thank you. So number two is comprehensive plan or the overall plan, and we've kind of bounced around that and discussed it. Our suggestion from the committee is to actually contract with a firm that can help us with that plan, much like the 24 comprehensive, 2040 comprehensive plan for the city of Fairview. Having that subject matter expert come in, look at an inventory or park system, and help us to create that plan of what the city residents want, that connectivity, the activities, all of those things. So we have a good, solid base and a plan for the future growth of our park system. You know, we've, we've kind of had just an issue with truly identifying throughout the years with Bowie Park, with implementation of the master plan, for example. People spent a lot of time in that document, hundreds and hundreds of hours went into that document. document, and I, I don't think we were able to fully implement that master plan. And my thought is, if, if we have this comprehensive master plan that the city invests in, that we have budgeted, that we can really get some traction when it comes to our park system. So I, I would like to, to see us move forward with that. Mr. Collins, you talked about, we do have some money available to potentially contract with a company.
Yes, sir. In the, in the budget, the current year budget, I believe there's $10,000 for a master plan for the park, and then $10,000 for a forest management plan, for a total of 20. You could combine those two, and a, a part of a forest management plan is going to be included in the operation or master plan. So if that was the focus, then my suggestion would be to take that 20,000 and apply those dollars and kind of do the whole, the whole study for that. The money's already budgeted, so we don't have to look for that. But given that the, the forest management plan is going to be a small part of that anyway, and that's a little bit over budgeted, we looked at doing that a couple of years ago, and it wasn't $10,000, it was, it was several thousand less. So I think with the two, I don't know what the operational plan cost would be, but I know there's $20,000 available today that could be applied to that with, with no issue.
Okay.
Is that typically doable?
So currently, Williamson County is going through a master plan process for their entire park system, and there may be an opportunity for us to work with their contract, yeah. So I would like to take a look at that. Mr. Collins, if you could research that and potentially-
Sure.
-see what the cost would be.
When would that happen? Are they doing that now?
They're doing it currently, yeah. And a couple of other firms that I talked to, they could begin immediately. Of course, they would have to do an assessment, come here, do an assessment to give us a dollar figure. We never got to that point of asking them, okay, what's it going to cost? Because they would have to come and do a site survey. So, Mr. Collins, do you have any experience?
There are a couple of ways you can do it. First is, if you want, if we reach out to whoever's doing the county, they can give us some ballpark estimate of, of dollar, right? If they're in all of Williamson County, they can look at ours and probably pull it up on a map and give us some idea of what that is.
Right.
As it relates to, to how you could go back and do that, there are a couple of ways you can do. If, if the board was comfortable with whoever was doing this through Williamson County, I think that's an easy, I'm not suggesting we do or don't, but that's, that's an, that's an easy transition. If the board decided that they did not want to go in that route, then we can put out an RFQ, request for qualifications. Given this professional service, we don't have to bid that, there's no dollar that we're looking for, it's not a project so much as a service. So you don't have to, you don't have to put out requests for bids, but you can put out requests for qualifications and have different firms come and submit those to you. And you can list on that request of, request for qualifications, specific things that you want. If you're looking for 10 years' experience doing these things, similar size of scope work and similar city size, you can work with those however you want to, to make sure you get the qualification set that you're looking for. So my suggestion would be first start in Williamson County, see what we get back. If that does not appear to be something that the board would be satisfied with, then we can RFQ that out, see what those proposals are, and get some information back. But certainly, I think we can identify a pretty close budget for that service with the conversations with Williamson County.
Is Williamson County using their own staff, or are they having outside sewers?
Outside, yeah. They're contracting with a company.
I think that's what we push on, we try and see who, what that group is and try and get equipped from them. I reached out to Partest, I think you guys might have done some, some similar, the same. They have a standard, or, you know, a standard sample master plan on their website. We wanted to see if they had any recommendations of people who, you know, they're familiar with doing projects like that, but if somebody's doing it in our county already, that's probably the best person to, to piggyback on.
And I, I think another benefit, just the connectivity with Williamson County Rec, you know, we have two facilities here in the city, you know, and the connectivity with them is, I think, beneficial as well. So.
If we're walking.
Great. So, and I hate to put timelines in any of this stuff, Mr. Collins, because I know you're a busy man. We've got a budget coming up. When can we reach out to them and potentially, just with, with your experience, when do you think we could get to a point where we would vote on allocating that money?
I don't know. I, I will, I could, I'll go with Williamson County next week, see what they can tell us. I can communicate that back out to everyone. We can have a quick follow-up, obviously, at the next POC meeting, kind of, here's what I learned.
Okay.
And then within that, make, make some decision on that. If they appear as a group to work with, and the cost works within reason, that's fairly easy. We would just have to have the board execute a contract with them for those services.
Okay.
Those are not difficult. I, I'm sure that's probably boilerplate, if they have it for there, they could just kind of reduce that down for our purpose. If we RFQ it, those are typically going to take 45 to 60 days.
Okay.
Because if you RFQ, you put that out, you'd have to give them time to put together that proposal, then you got to have them come in, make those proposals, interview them, and make some decision on that. So the RFQ process will take, let's call it 60 days. If you go with, with another contracted vendor or someone there, then that's, that's nothing more really than the execution of a contract.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions or discussion about that comprehensive plan, or, I think it'd be a huge benefit for us. So number three is, now that, now that we're through some of these optical, obstacles that we've had in the past two years, this huge COVID obstacle of keeping everybody inside and, and away from each other, things obviously have started to open up, more people are going to the park. And before COVID, we offered many, many opportunities with programs for children, for adults, and I, I would like to see those opportunities come back. However, we have to have city staff to do that, for sure. And, you know, this is where funding comes into play, this is where having programs and these opportunities can also help fund other programs and opportunities. We, we made the suggestion, and looking at the naturalist versus other positions, the POC committee came up with a park manager position. I actually have a job description that I gave everybody, and would like to talk specifically about that job description, and does this fit as a park manager position? What, what position does this fit as? I know that pay grades may, may need to be increased for a park manager versus a naturalist what we've had before, but we need to have somebody that can quarterback these programs and keep the calendar, and do all of these other things that's in this job description for our park systems. Our park currently, in current state, is highly underutilized, and there is so much more that our park system has to offer. However, we're going to need city staff to make sure that happens. And I, I think, and this is an opinion, all of other, all of our other stakeholders that we have, have been introduced, or have discussed, or have talked about, we also need that quarterback to be that, that intermediary between the city and all of our partners, Friends of Bowie Nature Park, the Historical Society, all of these groups, these volunteer organizations, we should be harnessing that volunteer, those free hours, those people that want to come and help, we should be reaching out to them. It needs to be a coordinated effort, and we have seen with the other park system, Percy Warner, many other, other park systems that have these very strong volunteer bases become very successful. And we want to see that same success here in the city. So with that being said, we suggested this park manager position to try to be that quarterback for all of these initiatives in our park system, and then hopefully grow to where we can, can put more positions in the park as we continue. And hopefully, that comprehensive plan can tell us, when we get to this point, we're going to need this staff member, and increase our staff members so we can provide more services to our community. So just really quick, this, this city manager, or the city parks manager is, and I'm not going to go through this verbatim, and there were a couple of copies, if anybody out in the, the audience wants a copy, we can certainly give that to you.
There's one for us.
Yeah, you've got it. It's underneath all that stuff there, I think.
I'm not working on my pile of time for you.
Of course, this position would, would report to the director of the park system, and is the person that really plans and keeps the calendar for the park, for all of these community organizations to come in, and also plans the activities that the park can provide. We have, I, I think, a, a great public information officer, a great marketing strategy, we just need now somebody that can implement some of these suggestions, ideas, on a consistent basis. Keeping the, the, the nature center open, for example, as, as many days as possible, I think, is important. Another reason that we would like to see this position created or funded, now that we're going to open up the playground, we're going to see a influx of, of children and, and parents and, and community coming out to the park, and it would be able to, it would be great to be able to keep that nature center open. It's another bathroom, it's closer, they don't have to cross the road, but it's another opportunity to get people involved in the park. If they're there at the playground, if we can have somebody out there saying, hey, we've got this wonderful program at Historical Village next week. We can incorporate our entire park system, and it could truly be the showcase, but we need that quarterback. So would, would like your thoughts on potentially putting this position into place.
I agree. I appreciate all the work you've done in your committee, putting all of this together, because it's well thought out, and I think it's very important, especially since we're moving past the COVID era, to get the, you know, the kids and the families back participating in different activities at the park, along with camps, which, you know, have been so popular in the past.
I think it would be great.
I think it would be great if we could get camps here. I know a lot of parents send their kids to some camp every week.
Yeah.
But our camps here have always been like, from, you know, 10 till 2, or 9 till 2, which does not work with any parent work schedule-
Right.
-typically. I also know that there are so many opportunities to get interns that would work all summer and learn their skills as they go through school and develop those service learning projects, that they would have to report and do this as class study. So I think those skills of this person would be great, too, to know, to know those things, and that would save the city money and staff for the summer.
Mayor, specifically to that, so you're talking about those volunteer hours, those people that are more than happy and willing to come and provide those volunteer hours, and we, we've heard that over and over and over again. People are willing to do that. We, we just need that city quarterback to kind of harness all of that super excitement that those volunteers and put into work and-
Oh, I agree.
I mean, to be able to provide these services. So you're exactly right. That, that is, that was our, really our first, the first thing that we envisioned, is having that quarterback to be able to, to harness all of these volunteer hours and to, to start getting to work. Mr. Collins, and this is obviously a, an operational thing, you know?
Sure.
I would love your thoughts specifically about this position, and tell us, tell us how we can make this better, how, how we can fit it in to, to currently what you have.
Yeah, this isn't difficult. The, it's very similar to park programmer. You change a little bit of language, you can go through the things, and the park programmer job description is not really that much different than where we are here, so things to work in there. I think the, the biggest point of discussion for all this is, and you've hit on this, and I think the, the board agrees, is you've, you've used the term quarterback a, a few times, and I think the park programmer in the past wasn't used as a quarterback, it was used as a graduate assistant coach, to where you had five different elected officials, three different outside groups, no many, how many volunteers for how many places, and that person was really kind of floundering, hamster on the wheel, with who do I listen to, what do I do? And the idea that they quarterbacked was offensive to everybody else who was involved. I think setting the standard for, we're going to establish these programs, we're going to do these things, but this person's job is to direct those things. They are very much the quarterback.
Right.
I, I think that will make all those programs more successful. It seemed to me in years past that the programmer was typically at odds with certain groups when they attempted to start a program or an activity, or make an improvement in the park, or some other thing. And I think kind of changing the narrative on that to where this person's job is to, in fact, guide, direct, and do those things makes it successful, where in the past, you know, we, we would advertise for a summer program, and you'd have eight kids sign up for the summer, we would charge them $25 for the summer, we'd made $1,000 for a program that cost us $15,000, and people weren't upset because we only had 10 kids in the thing for the summer. We, we didn't, it was, it just wasn't given the opportunity to succeed within that framework. You may recall a few years ago, a couple, I think right after you got on the board, we did a study to go back and look at the cost of operating the park versus the revenue that was done for the park, and I believe for that year, the total cost operationally was $237,000, and the total revenue for the park was $6,000. So not looking at that from a revenue standpoint, but from, it just, it just proved the point that those programs weren't as robust as what they appeared to be by discussion. So with that, I think if we go in and focus on making those programs a priority, the position succeeds. I, I think we just set up to fail in the past, and that's-
Right.
-that's not a knock on any one of the process. I think time has a way to, to bring about kind of a corrective approach, and I think this would work.
To your point, I, I think this is a great opportunity for a reset, where we can slow down, we, we hit the reset button, we put these positions in place, we build these relationships, and, and we can really take off. I think also this comprehensive plan is, is imperative to our success, so we have a clear sight, we have a clear direction, and we have a clear goal with what we want in each, each of our parks and the overall park system. So really, it's not one individual, it's not one group, it's, we have this plan, this is what the community wants, this is what we're going to do. So.
So what we'll do on, on staff side, or on my side, is, it likely won't be next week, but the week after next, two weeks, go in, make a few calls, get some information, and figure out kind of what this position looks like for similar parks in the area, identify what some costs are for its personnel, salaries, that sort of thing. Once we can identify that, we can just simply adjust a job description we already have and get that position advertised. As you're aware, that position has been budgeted this year, hasn't gone away, so it's not that we have to search for dollars in the coming year budget to do it. Now, we may have to make some adjustment on, on that, but we're in a position to do that. So I think if this was where we were going, depending on applicants, I think we could expect and hope that by early summer, we could have the position filled.
Great.
And I think the blessing-
I'm sorry, I keep forgetting that. I think the blessing is I'm scanning your priority list. I mean, a lot of these jobs, if the city signs off on it, are volunteer jobs.
That's right. Yeah. Yep. What if we don't fill the volunteer slots? Man, we, we have talked to so many people that are willing to volunteer, and, and for whatever reason, in the past, we've had, we've had roadblocks, and I think relationships were an issue, and I, I can tell you that, at, at least from my opinion, and I'm sure my colleagues will echo this, we want to work with any volunteer organization, and as long as we can do it safely, as long as we can be effective, we want to harness volunteer hours as much as we possibly can. It's just a net- It's just a net plus. But we need to have a, a clear direction when we start talking about those volunteer Like I said, we, we've talked to, to many of our sister parks, and they are doing just amazing things with their friends groups and, and all of their other partners. So the opportunity is here in the city of Fairview. We have those people that want to, I, I feel, and the people that I've talked to, we've got those people that want to volunteer. We just have to set that system up, that volunteer mechanism, we need to set it up for success.
Speaking from experience, there are lots of volunteers in Fairview. I mean, we have hours and hours of volunteer service every year. I think it is just a, a matter of publicizing what the project is and how many people want to come out and do. I mean, I noticed that drywall needs to be fixed, so it'd be a simple matter of posting a project, say, drywall repair this weekend, and whoever can do that could show up. So I think the Rod's part, point is just publicizing what needs to be done that day.
And, and we talk about volunteers, it's also generating funds for these, for these, you know, events and things that need to take place. So it's not just the volunteer hours, it's also using these volunteer groups to generate funds to fix things in the park. Or if there's a, an initiative that this park manager or park coordinator and that, that group, that assigned group thinks, hey, this is our next priority, they can start, you know, searching for either grants or funds to, to, to make that happen. So it's not just the volunteer hours, it's that, that funding mechanism that comes along with that group that we desperately need. Anything more about that position or?
Very exciting.
Yeah. Great stuff. Great stuff.
Blank slate, maybe a liaison with the, the operational park plan, if, you know, if that all coincides in timing or whatever, and it'd be wide open. In summertime, we could hire seasonal help for camps and things like that and grow the bigger picture, so.
Get volunteer snake wranglers too.
Yeah.
Get those out of the park.
The park manager would report to the director of the park? Who is that now?
Keith Paisley. Yep.
Is the director?
The director of the park. Yeah.
What do you envision the big difference between the director and manager?
Yeah. So the, and we'll have to probably specifically define this, but when you look in this, the city of Fairview park manager in this, in, in this job description that, that we submitted, and it's going to be tweaked, but this is more of the person that holds the calendar and is in charge of the programs within the park. You know, the park director is in charge of maintenance over, overall, but this, this coordinator or program coordinator, whatever we call it, to what, where it fits into the operational landscape, this is the, the quarterback for all of the programs within the park. And there, there are some specific duties that are listed here, but in, in my mind, in my opinion, and, and what we've talked about in the POPSY committee, it is that person that coordinates the activities, that is the liaison between all of our, our volunteer groups. So the Friends of Booboo Nature Park, the veterans with the American Legion, any, any interest group that wants to come to help, that is their liaison where they're working, prioritizing, determining programs. That's what that person would be doing.
Could you?
I'm sorry, I, I think everyone's having, if you could come up to the podium and use the microphone, that would be great. Thank you.
I'm just going to understand. We had the naturalists, that's what their positions were called.
Right.
So are you saying we wouldn't have a naturalist now? This person would have a naturalist degree or?
Yeah, so that
Because I don't think a lot of people realize all the work that goes behind these programs. It isn't just it's, there's research, like with the camp. I don't know how long they planned those programs. I mean, I, I just want to understand that, that this person is going to do all of this work.
Right.
And
I think this is a first step too, where your operational plan is going to lay out more details about future growth, staff growth.
Okay.
So this is kind of a first person to start getting some, some programs running again, start getting some more people in action in the park.
Okay.
And as we get that operational plan, it's really going to try and set future growth, future staff growth, future, you know, naturalists or whatever the positions may need to be to serve whatever future vision is there. So this is just kind of a step one, let's get somebody back over there, start having programs again, and as that operational committee comes together, it will kind of paint the bigger picture.
Okay. And then, Mr. Collins, you had said something about eight campers? What, did you or did I misunderstand, being in a summer program or?
I may have said that number. They were, they were substantially low. Those were not self-supporting events.
Yeah, but I, I think we had a lot more than that, having, I'm just
Whichever the number was. It certainly was not a self-supporting event anyway, and that's, that's the purpose of the
Okay, thank you.
And I will say too, the, when we, when I was first elected to the board, one of the things we looked at was the park. And I know some of the commissioners, we were looking at the park programming schedule. And I believe it was late August when we were looking into the schedule. And from September until the end of December, there were only 20 hours of programming planned for the park. So, and that's what the park staff had given us, that was their schedule. So that kind of concerned us too, that we need, you know, we needed to use the park more, that we needed to have more than 20 hours of programming for three months for a 40-hour-a-week employee doing that kind of thing. So we, we, we offered up concerns then.
And, and Mr. Riley, to talk to you specifically why the recommendation was for that park manager's position instead of a naturalist or instead of a park ranger, when you start talking about those positions, they start getting very defined. Our park manager position, or this position that we're, we're talking about here, is really stepping back and trying to coordinate all of these groups that can do great things for our parks and to start slowly but surely providing these programs back. So for example, if, if we want a nature hike and we see interest and we need that naturalist, we can contract with one of the naturalists at Percy Warner, for example, pay them $100 and they'll come out and provide that program for us. So it's that quarterback that we need until we start growing these programs to then start adding these employees back to the park. So we just, we need to get that person into place that can start providing these programs.
Commissioner, let me add one, just one other thing, just not, so never want to lose sight on this stuff too. It was, for us operationally, this is a big step. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that 36 months ago, we were laying people off. We were making decisions between a park naturalist and a police officer, a park programmer and a firefighter, IT and someone to help literally clean the buildings. So when we're making those decisions, when you had the low participation in some of the activities there and the reality that we literally could not sustain a payroll, you make decisions as you can to do. So I think with the recovery that we've had since that time, certainly in the last 40 months or so, I think if you look at the recovery and where we've gotten, the effort to make an investment in these programs, but ensure that we're doing it such a way to where the programs are sustainable, and you have someone qualified to do that, and I think, Commissioner Butler's point, I think he's right. I think the effort is to restart the program, but do it in such a way so that it can be built upon rather than become a target or discussion of failure. And I, I would much rather us have the conversation 12 months from now and figure out, oh my gosh, what are we going to do to fill these positions we need for the, for the parks, rather than have a discussion of what do we do with these people who don't have anything to do.
Right.
And I, I don't think that's fair to the employee, I don't think it's fair to the public. So I think the approach that this board's discussing to go with that is certainly prudent, not only as a business model, but as a services model to the community as well. So we'll afford it to getting this kicked off.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure.
Mayor, the last thing that I had is just that priority list for the parks, and the POPSY committee was, was able to go around and to tour, Brian Bussell was, was gracious enough to take our committee around and to go to our three parks and to look at everything specifically. And, and we identified just a couple of things, and many of these things, Mr. Collins, I know Keith is actually working on, but this was just the list that we, we saw as the priority, the list. So I believe we gave this to you electronically as well. We added a couple more things. I, I do want to point out one thing, and Dr. Rice was kind enough to, to show me my error on the, on the form here. It's not the Boone Street Clinic porch that needs to be fixed, it's the, the, it's the other building, the
Post office.
Post office, yeah. Yeah. Great.
I got ahead of, I got roots, keeping reading.
So that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
Mayor, this is, Mr. Collins, I know you have some maintenance assignments we talked about too, and the parks working on, like plumbing and some of the bathrooms and things like that. I don't know if it's feasible, but it would be great for that July 2nd, kind of have some of these things checked off and kind of have the park in, in top shape for that playground, you know, unveiling.
Right, as we sit here tonight, we're looking at, we believe we're going to be about 45 days ahead of schedule on this period.
So if that is all, we will take a break until 7:00.